I'm there.
I'm nothing. They're all looking.
I was busy today. I didn't get to look up any of the stuff, so I wasn't quite sure where she was.
Oh, there was like Paris. I'm trying to think. It used to be Muddy's over there, but then it was, now it's Blue Spruce, I think, was a coffee house.
She's on Nub.
I know. I was getting the Cliff Notes from Chris, but it sounds like. Yeah. Well, we do, but I was just saying, I don't think we, I still don't think we have a Nub.
We do.
Well, okay.
Yeah, me, Jen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Right.
Yeah, I didn't.
It's their investment, exactly.
I didn't tell you.
I don't know where the parcels break up.
Considering we're gonna get a SIM. Um, the face guy.
So she's got to be one of those.
He's got the Truville Williams building.
But as long as she has those streets, they're a little.
I.
That should be easy to take care of.
The paint store?
Yeah, I mean, those stores.
My kids, they're into cars and they like that building because it's got a nice, long, brick background. They're gonna take pictures.
And those are bright lights.
And they took a picture of their cars and sent it to me and said, hey, he strikes again. And they said, I bet he went inside and bought his paint, painted the building.
I don't know. That's 24/7. Cause that's.
Well, maybe they need to put in some.
Blue and gold.
John, I apologize for not emailing you back as soon as I saw you. I thought, oh, shoot.
Yeah. Usually, usually. Okay, alright, alright. I must have missed it, cause I got all the other stuff and then I just sat down here tonight. I know, but usually like.
Well, I'm sorry, but I have a real problem re-zoning something, not knowing what's proposed to go in there. I mean, that's where we ran into with everything.
Not really worried about that.
Is we re-zoned and then something went in there that we didn't want, or was going to go in there, that some of us didn't want to go in there. Do we have to hurt, in front of the horse?
Well, that's always been forever.
Yeah, this is probably one of the most bizarre holidays, seasons because of the midweek, midweek stuff. It just, it just treated. Have it worth. Instead of doing that at work today and having a schedule. Lock me out of my schedule.
As we found out, we were in circles.
Because.
Because you have, because you have the nursing. Which street and you have.
I thought the bell story was gonna go where the Dairy Queen was at.
Right.
My son calls. So I was.
So based on the name of, of the commissioner, and we both have any, I'm gonna guess what it's gonna be.
Because I don't, yeah, I agree.
Oh, no, no. I mean, we're gonna be across the state. You've been. Dude, you know, we, we won't. We've only had this. How many times? Down there. Yeah, yeah. Well, just whenever you're at, I think. Oh, soon as. No. I'm like, since at this point, there'll be one more drive when we get to that one, cause everyone else is going. No, everybody else will be gone, so at that point, my person sitting in the, in the audience will be. As soon as the mayor finds a seat, we'll get started. We're on YouTube.
I'm assuming we get these after during the public hearing hours.
I have no idea.
What is our?
I purposely have not paid any attention. I purposely paid zero attention to that as Amy's worked on.
I had a headache.
Sure, sure. Public hearing sure looks bad if they see something public that's on camera and then they, then they pull the rug out.
Right, and I know they're not.
That's all, Mike, right?
Thank you. Well, it is quite, not quite seven o'clock, but within ten seconds. So we'll go ahead and call our first meeting of 2025. Our first regularly scheduled meeting, Worcester City Council, is being held here Monday, January 6th. The meeting is live streamed on YouTube and it's now after seven o'clock. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. And that will be due to Martin Luther King Day, so it'll actually be on Tuesday, if I didn't already say that. And with that, Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please call the role of the council.
I will. Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Huzai.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Knappick, or Miss, sorry, Ms. Ms. Knappick, I'm sorry.
Well, something has changed in the last ten minutes. I'm still Ms. Knappick.
I'm doing real good. Ms. Knappick.
Our clerk.
She's here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All right, well, with that, we have a quorum and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I'll ask you to stand and join the members of council reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, do I have approval of the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Malta. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, communications from you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Um, I'm gonna apologize in advance because I am gonna run a little long tonight. Um, I know that going in, uh, I'll say two things. First of all, I know we've got kind of a small agenda tonight, so hopefully we're not gonna run too long. And secondly, it's being the first of the year, I wanna kinda lay out a couple of things that council's gonna be seeing in the next few months and, uh, for both the public and for you. Um, give you, uh, a taste of what's in store. Uh, I also apologize for the snow. I made the mistake New Year's Eve at a gathering of kind of facetiously bragging about 2024 being the best year of snow removal in the city's history. Uh, mostly because we had no snow and somebody who was listening in 2025 has turned out the other way, so my apologies to, uh, the street guys and for those of you that like snow. You're welcome. Activities since we last met, um, I know that the question on everybody's mind is the name, the snow pile contest. Buzz Ice Clear was the winner and you saw the pictures, I think if you saw Joel's memo, so we do have that there. Going back to December 19th, Triway had a ribbon cutting and, uh, opening ceremony for the new building. Joel and I were there. I know Jen and Lucas were there, maybe some others were. Um, it's really a spectacular facility. You ought to find time to get there. I, it was kind of a lot of people there, a lot of crowd, and I kinda, I was able to get, uh, a private tour Saturday morning with Superintendent Schindlhoff. And I was ki-, you know, really impressed before and I came away even more impressed. And, uh, it's a great thing for the Triway community, some of which is in Worcester, but because, you know, our employers draw, uh, employees from all throughout the county. It's really, uh, important for Worcester as well, and really the whole county, I would say that. The 20th, then, we had a CRA Housing Council meeting. This is where we, uh, it's a committee, um, consisting of council and designees from the, uh, community to review all CRA, um, projects. I think Jen's on that one and, uh, I'm trying to think who else. Mr. Sanders was on that and, uh, had a chance to review our pending or existing CRA agreements. Um, the 30th, at the end of the year, there is a countywide swearing in of public officials at the administration building. Um, just, you know, a lot of new faces, a lot of returning faces. We have two new county commissioners, although Dave McMillan is just kinda new, I suppose. And Matt Martin were sworn in, Scott Wiggum, new clerk of courts. Um, we had a number of people coming back for new terms. Jane Carmichael, Russ Robertson, Melissa Koch, uh, Dr. Jalliffe and Scott Miller, positions of recorder, auditor, treasurer and coroner, and engineer. Tom Ballinger did his separately last week to a packed court, uh, courtroom at, uh, the courthouse. Uh, and Meredith Craig was part of that as well. Also, we had some retiring public officials that were recognized at these. Tim Neal, Ron Amstutz and Travis Hutchison, Tim from clerk of courts job, Ron from the county commissioners and Travis from the sheriff's office. We wish them all well in their retirement. Um, last week on Thursday, we did an orientation meeting. Uh, Vince ran that, did a nice job of it for all, I guess, his committees, if he, his people, if you could say that. Uh, Building and Design Commission, BZA and Planning Commission, I think it was pretty well attended. He brought them in, just, some of them are returning members, some of them are new. Did kind of an orientation, fed them a very cheap supper, uh, but I think it's, the effort was appreciated. On Friday, Worcester Community Hospital announced that they are recognized for the 10th time as having the fastest door to needle time in the entire OSU hospital network. Door to needle time represents the amount of time it takes from when a patient arrives at the hospital, which is the door, to the time when they receive an intravenous injection. Um, in this case, typically for acute stroke patients needing clot busting drugs, and that's the, the needle. And the, that, that time is crucial to their success in, in recovery. And, uh, this is a point of pride for the hospital and should be one for the community as well. Looking ahead, we're meeting with Superintendent Tudor this week to talk about some of the issues that I'm gonna touch on in a second. The annual Main Street meeting is on the 22nd. And we just received news today that the city is going to be recognized, uh, for a design award for participating in the Butterfly Alley project. Um, Joel was quick to point out that that was really a corroborative effort involving Maytree and some other organizations, but for whatever reason, Worcester City is gonna get their name on the award, so we'll take it. And then, uh, end of the month, January 28th, Scott Rotolo is being recognized at the State House where he'll be receiving the, and I better get this right. Ohio Association of County Behavioral Health Authorities Advocate of the Year Award. So that's a statewide award that Scott's getting, um, and Joel and I will be in attendance, as will Scott's wife and some other members of Worcester PDSE. Chief Fisher will be there and, uh, again, it's nice to have those opportunities to, uh, we, we have a lot of people doing a lot of good things. And it's nice to be able to join in the celebration of when they get the recognition that they deserve. Quick review of the agenda. We have two items on second reading that will require suspension of the rules if you want to adopt them tonight. The first, um, I will mention all because it's titled, uh, as an increase in the competitive bid limit. That is, is misleading, cause that's not what it is. And the language in the ordinance is correct. Uh, it actually increases the authorization limit. You've previously acted to increase the bid limit. That's already been done. It's just it comes out of the same section of the statute and that's why it'd end up, but again, despite the name of it, what it actually does is increase the authorization limit. The second one is the zoning amendment application for property at the southwest corner of Smithville Western and Cleveland Road, and there will be a public hearing on that. We have five items on first reading. Those are all budgeted and this kind of reflects a change around now in the 2025 calendar year, where these are the same type of things we were dealing with the last couple of meetings that were gonna be spent or paid for in 2025, but they weren't budgeted in 2024. Well, now the calendar's flipped, these things have, on the budget that we approved at the last meeting, so again, they will not require three readings. There's only one of them that I would, uh, bring to your attention, and that's 2025-02. The administration is gonna request passage of that tonight, and Mr. Gaffey, I'm sure, is gonna go into, uh, explanation as to why that is when we get around there. Uh, before we get to 2025, I wanna take a quick look back at 2024 on one item. Uh, and if, I'm not suggesting that this would be a good idea, but if I had had a chance to talk at the end of the last meeting, uh, I would have taken that opportunity to congratulate council on the work done at that meeting and in the weeks leading up to it with regards to the recreational marijuana dispensary moratorium. And this has nothing to do with the outcome of that discussion, but everything to do with the way you got that done. There was a civil discussion between people that have very different positions on the issue, which unfortunately is all too rare these days. The administration did not take a position on the issue, but we promised to support council no matter where you ended up. And I will hold to that commitment and I would be saying the same thing if the vote had come out otherwise. There will be people in the community that disagreed with the result and that's their right. And it's also inevitable that some people aren't happy with it and that's just the nature of your jobs. But, uh, nobody can be critical of the effort you put into that and, uh, for that, you all need to be congratulated. Okay, looking ahead, 2025, two issues on the radar, one potential. Um, the first one's housing. Uh, we're gonna continue to work to increase, develop the land around the margins of the city, which means a continued expansion of the city boundaries. Higher density housing means farmland preservation. It's as simple as that. And, uh, also means that if we develop housing within the city limits, uh, that the housing will conform to city zoning, which is not the case if it develops outside the state limits and comes in later. The second thing we're doing, and we've talked about this maybe for on and off for the last year, is we are gonna bring to you proposed revisions to the zoning code to provide more flexibility in residential areas to encourage new investment. This would apply to all residential zoning districts, but will likely have the greatest impact in the older housing districts surrounding our downtown. We need to find a way to encourage investment in these older neighborhoods. These are areas where housing va- values have actually dropped in the last 10 years. And our population center has shifted north and east, not only because of new development, but also because of population loss south of Wayne Avenue. And this needs to be addressed. The howling out of our downtown residential neighborhoods can't continue without negatively impacting not only those neighborhoods, but our downtown as well. So that's item number one. Second item, um, is that the administration is prepared to move ahead with plans for the roundabout at Oldman, Winfield, Burbank. In the next two months, we'll be scheduling a committee meeting for the purpose of presenting the project to council in detail, even though actual construction won't take place until 2026 or even 2027. And I think John Rice may be saying that 20, the smart money would be on 2027. Now, we've had a lot of discussion about that in the last several months and, and to some extent, a little bit before we were, really were in a position to talk about it. But one advantage of that is, is that we know the concerns that have been raised by the public and, and we'll have people here to address those concerns. We've heard about fire and safety vehicles and, and we certainly plan to have Chief Sailing and Chief Fisher talk about that. Um, school, safety of school students, we certainly wanna have somebody from, you know, hopefully Superintendent Tudor will be available. Soccer players, you know, we wanna address that issue. Uh, if there's other people you wanna hear from or other points, you know, let us know going into that meeting. At some point this summer, though, will be legislation coming to council, which would seek authorization to acquire rights of way for the project. And at that point, council will get to decide whether to, number one, address the issues now. Number two, defer the matter for the time being, which, um, could be characterized as another moratorium of sorts or in a, uh, more, uh, street worthy, uh, phrase, kicking the can down the road. Or three, hoping the problem goes away by itself. I am hoping you choose option number one is, our feeling is that there's never gonna be a better time to address this. Uh, again, this is gonna be a situation where the administration proposes and council disposes. We think we have a traffic problem there and we also believe that we have a solution. In a letter to council, one of the most vocal critics has described the current situation as only being delays of 10 to 15 minutes, four times a day for nine and a half months during the year. To me, that's a problem. And if it's not, I guess the question I'm gonna throw out to council as we get into this is, at what point does that number become a problem? 20 minutes a day, four times a day, 30 minutes a day, four times a day, at what point do we step in and take action? Finally, the one that may be an issue, uh, and again, should be on your radar, is the cornerstone site. That is dependent upon the results of the May bond issue being brought, uh, by the Worcester School District. So it could be something, could be nothing. If that bond issue passes, as soon as 2028, the Worcester Schools would no longer be operating on that site. Which means that roughly 40% of the site would revert to the city and the remaining 60%, and that 60% that contains the cornerstone building itself, um, the, the Worcester School District will be looking for the city's help in, in trying to redevelop that property. And in turn, we'd probably be looking to Worcester Growth to do something similar to the role they played in the redevelopment of the Horn Nursing Home and the Freelander Stores properties. Um, it remains to be seen whether that repurposing would preserve the existing features of cornerstone building in the playground or not. Again, that's something down the road. There's potential for mixed use development there, residential and community use. And again, that's just something to have on our radar. But regardless, if that does come back to us, regardless of what the ultimate use is, um, the community needs to understand and council needs to understand that our administration is committed to making sure that that is a, an asset to the community and remains so. Um, and we women, wanna make sure that whatever use it is, it's one that's gonna add value to both the neighborhood and the community as a whole. Again, with all that being said, we're not gonna do anything further with that until after the May election, just because if it doesn't pass, then the building is gonna continue to be used for school purposes, although the plan then of the district has announced that it'll then be a district-wide third and fourth grade building as opposed to a neighborhood elementary school. So it could be, it's one of those situations where it could be something, could be nothing. So, uh, again, my apologies for running along, but I'm gonna make it up to you because I've got one story that came across my desk that I had to share. Part of it because it's so good and part of it being the season. Um, so one of the things you'll see in the newsletter is the acclaim awards, you know, that's the system, the, um, system we have in place for acknowledging, uh, efforts above and beyond the call of duty. And I will have to admit that sometimes I look at those a little too quickly and I add my signature and I move on to the next one. And this one caught my eye and, uh, I thought it was worth sharing. So, um, on Christmas Eve, Officer Timko was dispatched to Walmart to investigate a theft of lost property. The caller explained that she bought $800 worth of gift cards for her kids and put them in a separate bag while checking out with her other groceries. The caller got distracted by her kids and forgot to grab the bag with the gift cards inside. The caller was upset and sobbing to Officer Timko because she didn't know what to do. This is Christmas Eve. As this wasn't a criminal matter, Officer Timko took it upon himself to help the caller, so he got assistance from Walmart to watch the video footage to see if anyone had taken the bag with gift cards inside. He was able to locate a young man who brought items and placed those items inside the same bag as the gift cards. Officer Timko got a picture of the young man on Facebook and very quickly got both an ID and a telephone number. He was then able to talk to the young man, who had no idea that he had the gift cards in his bag, uh, as he had just bought some stocking stuffers for his father. Officer Timko was able to get the gift cards back to the owner before the end of his shift. This was indeed a Christmas miracle that Officer Timko performed for his family, which he could now enjoy these gift cards for Christmas. So, needless to say, Officer Timko got a, an acclaim award for that. And again, I apologize for extending this even longer, but again, I thought that was a story worth sharing. So with that, Mr. President, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, that was, uh, enlightening information and a very interesting story at the end there, so thank you. Uh, we do have, uh, we do not have any communications from the public, at least in our first portion of the meeting. Uh, we do, however, have a liquor control petition, which at this point, uh, if you'll read for us, Mr. Scavelli.
A liquor control request to transfer a D5A license from Best Western Incorporated, DBA Best Western Worcester, to Worcester Hotel 3 LLC, DBA Best Western Plus Hotel and Conference Center at 243 East Liberty Street.
And as in the past, we have three options, uh, that we can choose from. Uh, to have a hearing in Columbus, to have a hearing here locally, or not to have a hearing at all. Do I have a motion on any of those three options?
Motion.
Motion to waive the hearing by Ms. Warden? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey? Do we need a roll call that?
You do not.
All right. Uh, is it all in favor of, um, waiving the hearing? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, committee reports, we don't have. However, we do have a public hearing that will be, uh, handled by Ms. Knappick.
Thank you very much. Yes, we have a public hearing coming up right now on, um, the zoning amendment that we are requesting, that the city is requesting us to pass tonight. Regarding the property at, um, the corner of Smithville Western and, um, Cleveland Avenue. I believe we have people from, who are the owners of the facility will come and present that to us, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mitchell Folsa. I work for Campbell Oil Company and am here on behalf of them, a few of my colleagues, and also our engineer, John Ma. Our hope is, is that we can have a small portion of approximately 3.2 acre, uh, parcel at the corner of Smithville Western and Cleveland Road uh, for future development as a convenience store and gas station. The actual portion that is at issue here, um, is a small portion. I believe it's about maybe 0.4, 0.5 acres, 0.64 acres. Would end up being utilized for stormwater drainage and retention. Um, it actually, the intent would not be to have our physical building located there. The facility would be, uh, facing, I believe that is Cleveland Road is facing, so it's nickel western to the house adjacent of the, uh, remaining residential zone property, uh, would be more of a green space essentially. Um, so we ask all of your, uh, input and hopefully we can get that approved and passed so that we can move forward with our plans at that site.
So is the parcel in question, not the property that the, that the gas station would go on, it's just for the retention pond?
I have a few of them mine. I have a handout that might be helpful. Just passing around. And so the portion of this, and I think there's one for everybody, the portion of it kind of outlined in red, well, not exact, at least that portion that we're asking for the newly zone. What you would see over there is the current plan for the site. Um, and again, there'll be a gas station, convenience store, and then a car wash that you see below the footprint of the convenience store. Um, and again, to make kind of best utilize the site, we should all be zoned, commercial. But that red portion is an illustra- illustration of where we're talking about rebuilding. And again, what the plan and use for that specific such portion would be.
So this would not be built upon property?
That is correct. And I, I say that with being in the preliminary approval process. Our intent is not to put a, about built. anything about building on this portion of the property. If for some reason in the development process, we were asked by planning zoning, as we're moving through the development approval process, in theory, that could change, but it seems very unlikely and based on our preliminary plans and path forward to the site for anything other than this green space to be there.
Is this necessary green space for you to be able to put the, the Bell Store or the gas station, the, the car wash in?
Yes, and so probably, I don't, if you want to get more of the specifics, I'm sure, John, I don't know if you want to come talk to some of the engineering aspects of that, but that would be a part of our overall plan and strategy for the use of the site. We would need that space to be occupied by...
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, so it isn't necessarily like required green space per se, but it is, but it is green space that it'll be utilized for stormwater management, stormwater retention, which is required by, so it's kind of, I guess, an answer to your question.
It's currently zoned residential?
Just the portion that is highlighted in red on that handout.
And you can't put a retention pond in a residential zone?
No, I think we can.
Yes.
Why wouldn't we just do that?
Because it's all one, all one lot and we were just trying to make everything okay as, as far as the zoning goes.
Okay.
This, this whole kind of thing highlights, in my opinion, how things come to us backward as far as zoning goes. And I understand, I'm, I'm a lawyer, I know how to write these things, I know how to read these things, but, and I understand why, but we rezone without knowing what might possibly go in there. And then people are concerned because why would we rezone if we don't know what's possibly going to go in there? So I had talked to Vince earlier today and asked if there, and I realize that you guys are not required to submit anything to, to the city right now. I just want to outline my concerns about making sure that something is not going to go in there once we, if we change the zoning, that is something that, we had no idea was coming, I guess.
We're not looking for a bait and switch.
We're not, well, and I don't think that's going to happen.
Sure.
But I do like to have the assurances that we're not going to, you know, say, okay, let's, let's do this commercial and then another piece of commercial property goes in right next to these people right here, who if that were me, I would be very unhappy if I had a car wash right next to my driveway.
That's why I wondered if we could just leave it residential and go ahead and put the retention pond in the green space there.
Well, and my other concern that, that came to me, and this is nothing to you folks, I think you guys are really going to clean up a property that needs cleaned up, but we've been talking about residential, 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 how we need more residential, and this is an instance where we're taking residential property and we're zoning it commercial. And it goes back to what the mayor was saying about density of housing. And I understand that density of housing is important to preserve farmland, but we are, we are vested with looking at density of housing and, and commercial as it pertains to the city of Worcester and the value to the city of Worcester primarily. So those were just a few of the things that were going through my mind. We don't have enough residential zoning and now we're taking residential and making it commercial, although in that particular location, I, I, it's so mixed residential and commercial right now, it's unclear exactly what it is. And so I was concerned about that and I'm just concerned about that, we do have one person, and I'll read it into the record, who did make comments, she was afraid that they would have a visible building, they would be next to a car wash, and I can understand those concerns too. So it is kind of a catch-22. You don't have to give us your plans, but we'd kind of like to have your plans before we make a decision. So it's, it's a, that's kind of where I'm at from, from that.
If you're, I would just bring a couple of comments. One, hopefully our way of this room knows, we like to be good neighbors at Campbell Oil. On the point of residential, we own, we own this parcel already, we're not building a house on it. So while I completely understand the need for residential housing in many of the areas of all of Ohio and this area as well, our hope would be to have this, when we think from a business perspective, the right approach is to have a full parcel zoned, commercial. We would not intend to put, as I've said, I can't make the promise, but like, we would not intend to put anything on this portion. With that, there's also, and I don't know all the specifics, but because this property abuts to residential, we have heightened requirements for all of these building, building processes, making sure there's not, and again, we're good neighbors, sound lighting issues, buffers between our property and the residential property, which actually, the neighbor to the south of this, and again, we're, they kind of, they're going to be close to a car wash essentially, but it's already zoned, commercial. So like, not a ton that could happen there, but like I said, we're good neighbors, we'll, we'll follow all of the requirements, setbacks, buffering, that is going to come along throughout our development process as we work towards an actual building permit and approved set of plans. But I get the concerns, but again, I think our hope would be, well, one, I could, with a very high likelihood, do not think there's going to be any commercial building on this portion we're talking about. And then the other side of it is, again, we'll go above and beyond in that development process and make sure that both neighbors are happy. You know, we, we have various sites where somebody's working, one of our construction managers was there and a neighbor comes over in the middle of us building and says, hey, I, I'm going to be able to see all this. And we push trouble up, it might not be required by the city code, but again, we like to go above and beyond and we try to, and be good neighbors at all of our locations.
Mr. Marion, I got a question for you. Is there, from a city perspective, a benefit for them to go from residential to commercial if their intention is to just dig a pond?
Well, from a, from a land use?
Yeah, I mean, we've already determined if it stays residential, they can still dig their pond. Is there something from a city perspective that they get some sort of an advantage or there's some benefit that they go from residential to commercial?
Let me, let me, let me answer by saying this. What the applicant just stated is true, because this is adjacent to a residential district, there's going to be increased buffering, increased landscaping, as well as review for preliminary and a final development plan in front of Planning Commission. If it remains residential, some of that buffering maybe, that buffering is on the commercial side and not the residential side. So that would move the, they could still put their retention pond there, but that would move the buffering over from the, the property lines adjacent to the residential neighborhood and across the other side of the, of the retention pond. So there is somewhat of a protection there for the adjacent residential district. Now, whether it is a, a true benefit to have it rezoned or not, I, I can't answer that other than if you have a single piece of property, it's, it is beneficial from a planning standpoint to have the entire parcel zoned the same.
I had a quick question for you as well.
Yes, sir.
Just, I know the drawing's preliminary, but based on the drawing that I have here, several of the parking spaces encroach into what is now that residential spot, and then the entrance or exit from the parking lot is also encroaching into that residential lot. Is that still going to be, if it stays residential, is that something that would still fit within the code and allow them to have their parking lot go over the property line into the residential section?
Not without digging right in, I mean, without getting into it and, again, this is a very preliminary sketch.
I understand.
There could be some concern.
Okay.
But without actually sitting down and reviewing the entire site, some of that parking may not be needed, may, additional parking may be needed without, until I...
Okay. Thank you.
But the drive, yeah, the, the drive could be there.
Okay.
Now, kind of, you should, you're kind of alluding to it, and our preference for this would be all commercial for some of these reasons. We do think we could probably do what we need to on this property, but I think the cleanest and crossing P's, dotting I's appropriately, best path forward would be getting it rezoned.
Is there a specific reason why you want the city wants us to pass this tonight as opposed to a more reading? I, I guess I'm asking what the urgency is. Are we breaking ground tomorrow? Is there something that there's, that makes this an urgent suspended rules passage?
I think what I put in my memo was that it was, I think it was desired by the applicant to have it passed tonight, because regardless whether it's passed tonight or whether it's passed at the next meeting or any subsequent meeting, the zoning does not go into effect for 30 days. You can't pass a zoning amendment on an emergency basis. So if they want to meet the spring timeframe and having all their preliminary plans and final development plans approved, I mean, that just, that in itself is a three-month process. So that's, I believe they wanted to start construction sometime mid-year.
Maybe, maybe, if you, if you, we're not putting the shovel on the ground in the immediate future.
You are, good luck, because it's frozen.
Obviously, we would like to get this accomplished so that, again, we can check the box in our development planning process, get more, again, consolidate, we've consolidated all those, but there was multiple parcels, we've consolidated the one, this is kind of the last step that we hope to accomplish. And then as Vince alluded to, to our final plan sets in order for several permits and start that review and finalize those documents so that, again, you can get much closer to the new store on that corner.
Okay. Appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
What are the planned hours of operation for this site, for this facility?
I believe, I believe it will be similar to our other stores in the area of closed entrance after, I think, I think we do it like maybe 11:00 PM, maybe midnight some stores, where you can still get fuel, you could still use a car wash, but you can't go into the store. But other than that, kind of 24-hour access to fuel and the car wash.
Okay. And I guess the next question I have is more for the city. I know we're not going to fix this issue today, but I thought generally we should use the zoning code to step down and kind of protect property values for homeowners. Seeing a C3, a BUT, an R1 district seems counterintuitive to that. We don't really see that too much up, you know, Burbank Road, I'm looking at the map now, you know, the 585 corridor is zoned a lot differently than that, but the Route 3 corridor has a lot of R1 abutting, C3. I mean, how do we protect homeowners better in this instance or make sure this kind of thing doesn't continue to happen?
That's, that's a very good question. And that was a question that Planning Commission discussed at length at its, at its meeting. And I'm not trying to, to be smart or anything, but it's currently a C3 up against an R1.
Sure.
And obviously, there's always a better environment when there is a step-down zoning in between, to create somewhat of a transition between uses. What the Planning Commission really looked hard at is the, is the end use of what the applicant is saying they're proposing to do with this particular parcel in terms of a retention pond with increased buffering and landscaping.
I'm assuming that's fencing or...
Yeah, that mixed with the current conditions of the corner of Smithville Western in Cleveland, with the improved, with the history that this applicant has with developing property in the, in the community and surrounding area, in conjunction with the Dairy Queen going right across the street.
It'll look significantly better.
Oh, yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Right. And that buffering is extremely important and something that we always look at when there's a, a map amendment being requested.
It also adds a service at that end, whereas that current, I don't even know if that meat shop's even open right now, so.
Ms. Knappick, I could interject too. This is another instance that we typically see more in the downtown areas, but where the, the development of this area took place when it was outside the city. So it was a matter, you know, the zoning code was laid on top of it after the fact, which is why maybe it's not ideal from a planning standpoint to what, you know, to have the residential up against the C3, but it was a matter of making things fit to what the existing usage was at the time the Madisonburg Annexation took place many years ago.
So my concern, it kind of, I'm taking into consideration what Mr. Marion said a few moments ago about, you know, this would, could potentially increase the buffer requirements being a, a commercial zone property. But then, as Mr. Gaffey pointed out, there, there happened to be some parking spaces abutted up against that. I wouldn't imagine you're planning to put a lot of lighting around a retention pond, but I'm sure that the parking spaces would be well-lit. And I think that that then poses a concern to the adjacent properties, because light pollution is, especially when you're, you know, you, you live in the country and you're used to it being dark, I think that would be a pretty significant change for those property owners. Is there a way that you, in, in other circumstances, have used different forms of lighting to prevent light pollution?
Yeah, and I know some about this, but again, I know we use directional lighting and one of the, our canopies over the fuel pumps are one of the things that do have a decent amount of light, but then in parking spaces around the building, I think it's directional and, you know, we can talk more to that.
Yeah, so the zoning code is pretty explicit on the lighting aspects of it. And as part of the development plan process, we have to submit to the City of Land Commission and Mr. Marion, a photometric plan. What that is, is it shows the intensity of light at all places across the site. And as you said, we're not going to light the detention pond, we'll be lighting at the, the parking spaces, but that plan will, will depict how that light intensity decreases and there's a certain level that it has to be at to meet the zoning code. So I would expect it would be very similar to what you'll see across the street at the Dairy Queen.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we came through the same process with that site and it's a retention basin over there too. So I think that's a good example of what to expect here.
Okay. Thanks.
Hopefully I answered your question.
Yeah, you did. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Marion. If this remains zoned residential, and I should know the answer to this, but, and the project goes, is going forward, they would still have to do a certain amount of buffering regardless, I mean, Planning Commission can require that, can they?
Well, they can, they will review the submitted site plan for conformance with the zoning, with the code. The buffering will be relocated further, closer to the east.
I understand that. So you're not allowed to put any buffering on residential property?
Well, you're allowed, but that would be there, that wouldn't be required.
So the, the, making it the, rezoning commercial then extends it and then as part of the zoning, then it extends that buffering to the pond then?
The code, yeah.
There's the benefit.
But they can still buffer it if it was...
It has to be closer to the house.
But, but I think what they're saying is, is that if we do rezone it, then the city can kind of mandate that, hey, the buffering has to go with the pond, but if we leave it at residential, it stays with the commercial at where the building's going to be, so it doesn't extend as far out. So if they did not want to do the buffering, they don't have to, I think is what they're getting at.
Correct.
I understand, but ultimately, the whole plan is contingent on approval by the city, right? So whether it's commercial buffering, buffering, and I understand...
It's contingent upon meeting the code.
...the commercial zoning. I get that. But then you said, you can still buffer it if it's residential, and ultimately, the city has the final say on what gets approved.
No. The final, the, the Planning Commission will have to review it based upon what the code says. If it meets the details of the code, our recommendation would be for approval. It ends at Planning Commission.
If it stays residential...
Unless there's some kind of variance they need.
Right. If it stays the way it is, the buffering is going to be on the right-hand side of that line where that parking is not at the place of the town.
It's required, it's not necessarily going to.
Well, they will have to put it there.
And I, what I heard from the city is they can also put it on the residential property. They're required to put it on the commercial property.
I mean, at their, at their cost and their option, they could.
Absolutely.
But it would get approved by Planning Commission without it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're on the same page. Anything else? I did want to do my due diligence and make sure that we did receive a letter from Christie Bishop, and it was sent this morning, and essentially, it says, "Dear City Council Members, I received a letter about the city council meeting in regards to rezoning this parcel. I had planned to 10, but am unable to do so. She lives at 1712 Knup Drive, so this would directly affect her property since it would be visible through my backyard. I'm opposed to the changing of the zoning from residential to commercial. I had hoped it would be left residential and used as a large buffer zone from the impending Campbell Oil slash Bell Stores. I was concerned that the zoning would be requested to be changed when the property beside it was changed from residential to commercial in 2020. At the time that property was changed, it was said it would become a buffer area, but it seems plans change with the requi- it seems plans change with the request to have this one also rezoned. I am sure the value of my property will decrease with this rezoning since I have will have two sides of it attached to commercial zoning for the new Bell Stores. No privacy fence will be able to block the lights or noise from creeping into my backyard or those of the neighbors. I moved into my house in October 2007, purchased it in April 2010. It had been a quiet and wonderful neighborhood. I'm afraid rezoning the property would further deteriorate the neighborhood. I appreciate your time and hope that my concerns are taken into consideration. Thanks, Christie Bishop at 1712 Nup Drive, Worcester. Just want to make sure that got into the record since she wasn't able to attend. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
I have one more. Did you have one?
I just wanted to say, I do know that you guys are good neighbors and that you always work hard to fit nicely into the neighborhoods in which you build. I understand the neighbors' concerns. I've spoken to some people over the years who live up there and have voiced those concerns as well. I'm just going to go on faith that you're going to continue to be good neighbors because I know that this is definitely an improvement that we need in that area. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. And again, we have, that is our business model. So it's where how the company's got to where it is that we'll continue to do the same.
And I feel much better knowing that that you are not planning to build anything on that piece of property next to the residential property because in that case, I probably would not have voted in favor of it.
I understand.
One final question for you. Would the, and this is probably for Vince, if we left it residential, do the lighting restrictions change? Is there...
I'd have to go back and specifically look at the section of the code, but I believe it says use. So if they own the parcel, it would be bleeding from the parcel line, not the actual zoning district.
So it wouldn't matter if it's C3 or R.
Correct. I believe it's the parcel line.
And I do believe you're great stewards of all your stores and and our community. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? That concludes the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move on to unfinished business. We have a second reading on ordinance 2024-39, which will be introduced by Ms. Knappik. But before that, Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-39, an ordinance amending Chapter 160, bidding procedures and contract requirements with the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio by increasing the amount of the limit for competitive bidding.
Ms. Knappik, floor is yours.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank the city administration for getting the information to us as to how many of these contracts and things have fallen through the cracks over the last year and where it's created some issues for the city. It's really nice to get the hard data on that to see where it's where not raising the ceiling where the city can go out by itself without city council approval for bidding becomes a problem for the city. And I appreciate getting the information for that. I think we have discussed this matter probably more than anybody really wanted to. So I'm going to move to suspend the rules and pass this.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second by Mr. Abernathy? Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappik?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll on the...
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappik?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's adopted. Now you can, now you don't have to threaten us with special meetings if we get to a $75,000 limit on any midsummer project.
But don't come back for $100.
All right. Next item in unfinished business is ordinance 2024-40, which will also be by Ms. Knappik. But before that, why, Mr. Scavelli, read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-40, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio to rezone land to C3 general commercial for property located on the south side of East Smithville Western Road between Wilson Road and Cleveland Road.
Ms. Knappik, floor is yours.
Yes, thanks you very much. This is the topic we had the public hearing on this evening. I think there were some very, very good questions. I think we got very, very good answers. I will say that I live by a Bell Store and it's great. They are very good neighbors and the Sammeyer Company has been a very good neighbor and company and partner for the city of Worcester. Given what we heard here tonight, specifically for me, that there's not going to be any commercial building next to the residential property, my mind is set much more at ease. I think that will be a benefit at least to the person who did write in to us and told us that she was concerned that she was going to have to look at a commercial building. So with that in mind, I will move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappik. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappik?
Yes.
All right. Rules are suspended. Ms. Knappik?
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappik?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to thank you for coming and asking, answering our questions and listening to us and taking our concerns to heart. Thank you very much and good luck with your project.
Campbell Oil's been a good partner for a very, very long time, 25, 30 years here in town, so thank you. Yeah, it's okay.
I'm sorry. Campbell Oil is a very, very good commercial partner for the city. I'm so sorry. Nothing like calling you by the wrong name. I'm sorry. But Campbell, you are a very, very good corporate citizen for the city of Worcester and have done very many good things, and I appreciate that very much.
I'm sure Zach appreciates the plug.
Yeah.
No, no, he's, he doesn't get this. You guys get this.
All right. Well, that moves us into new business. First item is Resolution 2025-01. Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-01, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract for professional design services in regard to the stormwater storage building and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Huse, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a resolution which would allow the city to enter into a contract to design a new building for itself. You can see here in our packet, mostly to house some of our equipment that we use for stormwater operations and some leaf collection. Relatively straightforward building that would go down at the, where the city's at at the former ODOT site and, yeah, and Mr. Danning's here to answer any questions from anybody else on city council.
Just for clarification, it's at, it's going to be at 1151 Mechanicsburg Road.
I knew I'd screw that up.
Not at, that's the DNC's property.
The company name wrong.
Yeah.
You are forgiven.
I hope so.
This is a former temporary fire station?
Actually, it's actually just each of our main building. So it'll be up on the, up on the hill there.
Where are the, where's that equipment housed now?
So we have it dispersed in our main building. We have, we use the, the old DNC, the old temporary fire station number one. And so we'd just like to house everything all in one, one neat place, and we don't have to chase things up and down the road and be a nice asset for us as, as operations at PPM.
We're not looking at any of the current facilities then being not used as a result, are we? I don't want to build a new facility, put things in, and then have old facilities that are standing there empty.
No, ma'am.
I read in the description that this would be a design and build project. I assume that implies that staff will be conducting the construction portion of this? Is, is that how we're hoping it would?
No, actually not. I'll let John talk about that just a little bit more. He has more information on the processes of that.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So design and build, that's how we did the safety center.
Okay.
Basically, you go through a process of taking qualifications first, reviewing those, and then getting proposals from various design build firms.
Okay.
And then selecting one and negotiating price. Obviously, we'll have a budget to work within and then proceeding with the design and the bill. So you have one team that's doing both the design and the build compared to the normal design, bid, build. You have a difference. So having it all in one is advantageous. In this case, we, even though it's a smaller project, we felt like a design build would be better because there's a number of contractors that can do these buildings, but they all have slight differences. So to try and write a spec, get a design engineer to write a spec that would cover all of them, whereas we could just go the designer, design-build route and work with a number of them. And they're all, at the end of the day, it's basically going to be the same thing with slight differences. So that's why we felt like the design building, this would be advantageous for the project.
Am I out of my mind? I mean, $250,000 to design a building?
Can you call vote for that?
I know you'd vote yes. I, I don't know.
I accept that when you're in for the seat.
I, I know I'm one year in and I, I think I'm past my rookie phase.
You are.
But I'm sitting here looking at a $250,000 price tag to design a building.
Like a pole barn, basically.
And constructed. And constructed.
So this does include, okay. Because all I saw was the design phase. So I'm like, holy crap.
So whoever we, so whoever we bid this out, out to is on, they're going to do both. They're going to do the design, you have it, and they're going to do the building.
Well, keep in mind, it's not, not the concrete and the two-by-fours, the actual materials and construction. This is for the services, this would include the design, the construction documents, the permitting, all the things that a designer and/or architect would do in order to build the building. It does not include the cost of the building.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it does.
It includes the construction as well.
Okay. Now I feel better about it. I feel better about it, much better. It's a fairly small building, right? It's like a 5,000 square foot.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any, forgive my naivety on this, but is there any possibility for the Career Center construction students to be included in the bid process? Is that not allowed with city projects like this?
This is going to be a prefab steel construction building and kind of way out of their limits there at the Career Center. Bricks and mortar, a two-by-four construction, and that's not what this building's going to be.
Okay.
And I'm assuming this has got to free up some room in the other spaces where you're sticking all this equipment in corners and finding room for them.
That's correct.
So Mr. Huse, what say you?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Take your pick. One of the ladies on council.
We'll have it be Ms. Warden.
All right. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappik?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is adopted. Next item, Resolution 2025-02. This is also a budgeted item. This will be by Mr. Gaffey. And Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-02, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to outfit four vehicles for use as patrol vehicles, to purchase and outfit three vehicles for use as patrol vehicles and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Gaffey, the floor is yours.
All right. So, yeah, as Mr. Scavelli read, this is, the time has come to outfit the four vehicles that we authorized purchase of last year. And so that is included in this, but also there's an opportunity that's presented itself that's of a timely manner. There, we're, we're going to see some legislation to purchase, a proposal to purchase three new cruisers anyway this year. The reason this one's timely is because there are three cruisers that are brand-new 2024 models that are currently available. And so if we move forward in purchasing those now rather than waiting, there is a significant, a significant cost savings to purchasing those now rather than waiting for 2025 or possibly 2026 models later on down the road. I think we're looking at at least a $4,000 per cruiser savings, probably more if we ended up having to wait to October or whenever the next window would open. And Chief Fisher is here if anybody has any, any questions about these.
Chief, is it still a situation where getting your vehicles is difficult to get because of the scarcity of the vehicles in general?
So oddly enough, Ms. Knappik, this, it's kind of unprecedented, right? So I came to you last year and said, hey, I want to get in the order bank for 2025s if you wouldn't get to spring. Ended up looking into that, getting with the state bid dealer, talking to the local dealer. State bid dealer got back to me and said, you don't need to wait for 25s, I can get you four 2024s right now. I can't build them till the spring. I said, well, that's okay because we didn't allocate the money. I've got to wait anyway. So great. So we did that. As you all were in the process of approving the budget, we built money in 2025, order window would open in October, order 2025s, get them in 2026. Okay? Right about that time, state bid dealer sends an email, couple 2024s left if anybody wants them. I reached out to him, I said, hey, they're working on the budget, I think it's going to pass, there's three, I only have two. Well, wait a minute, let me call you back. He said, I have three. He said, would you want them? I said, well, I can't do anything until council approves it. I said, but if they would approve it, basically, we'd get those vehicles sooner rather than have to worry about hitting an order bank and then trying to reorder them. The other thing he said he would do is if we take these, there's a cost increase in the update between 2024 and 2025. He said he would still charge me the 2024 price he quoted for the four that we already purchased, so there's no increase in, in that cost. Right now, we know for sure between 24 and 25, there's at least a $4,000 price difference. We don't know what that will be between 25 and 26, but we're going to skip that too. So you are looking at a considerable cost savings. Now, it does give us these vehicles kind of sooner than we had anticipated, but the flip side of that is I can take a couple of the explorers that we have that maybe have lower mileage, get our hospital resource officer vehicle that's starting to time out, get it replaced, our SRO cars if we need, based on mileage and time, we can get those those replaced where we're, we're kind of keeping ahead of the game, which we were behind for a while with COVID.
And we will be able to get these vehicles quicker than we went to 2025 to 26.
Oh, absolutely. So the ones, the four that we already ordered would have, the, the order window opened later than they thought this year, was late October and was open into November, but we didn't have to worry about that because of 24s. If, if I couldn't get these 2024s this year, we would be looking at ordering them probably same timeframe, October, and not getting them until spring of 26.
This sounds like a pretty good break.
Good to know.
Caught a good break.
Good timing.
I, I kind of thought it wasn't. Frankly, I was surprised he was able to get three more because the four he found me off, off the initial order, I didn't expect that at all because I had had conversations about trying to order them with, with Chevy and Whistler. Any other questions? I'll defer to Kurt Denning like he did with John.
Well, it sounds like we were in the right place at the right time. Nice job, very good.
So Mr. Gaffey?
Yeah, so if the checkbox on my sheet is not inaccurate, then I would motion to adopt.
All right, well, it is a budgeted item, so therefore, motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Hussey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
All right. Now we got seven new Towels, yeehaw.
Not, not yet.
Almost.
Almost.
We'll all be signing up for ride-alongs.
We'll see what we can do.
All right, our next item, resolution 2025-03, again is also a budgeted item, which will be done by, or introduced by Ms. Warden, but before that, Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-03, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the addition of turn lanes and widening rolled shoulders for the Akron Road shoulder widening and turn lanes project and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, floor is yours.
Thank you. So the city was awarded a $330,000 Transportation Improvement District grant from ODOT, and that is slated to help pay for this particular project. The resolution will allow the city to advertise for bids to perform the work needed and to, to add turn lanes near Sheffler and widen shoulders along a portion of Akron Road. The total estimated cost is $625,000. So with the ODOT grant, that leaves the city responsible for $295,000. Otherwise, we can always postpone this and then the city would be on the hook for the entire 625 or greater. So it is a budgeted item and I think, you know, it's always, always nice to accept funds when they are granted to us, so I'm going to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any conversation? Any additional conversation?
The only thing I'd like to say is this is a very good opportunity that the city took to improve some things within our city limits where we could piggyback on to ODOT and use their money too. And I will say the city is always very diligent about doing that, so we appreciate it.
Is this going to play into the eventual roundabout that's going to go down there or is this separate from that?
It's separate, but we're going to piggyback on their closure. So that will be a savings for us because we won't have our contractor putting up all the road closed detour.
So kind of, sorta, not really, but kind of, sorta.
The timing just works out that way.
Good question.
Being in the right place at the right time sometimes can make all the difference.
Roger that.
So yeah, where exactly are we widening the road at then? Everything north of Portage or just?
No, it's Sheffler Way.
Okay.
So heading out of Worcester, go through the old airport intersection, Sheffler Way is that new.
Oh, the new one.
Yeah.
So just past Old Airport.
Yep.
And before you get to Geiser Chapel where they are going to be putting in the ramp.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Scavelli, if you want to call the roll?
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Hussey?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted. Thank you. Next item, resolution 2025-04, this will be introduced by Mr. Malta. It is also a budgeted item. Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please read it for us.
A resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the long road water storage tank painting and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So I do have John here to answer any fine details. However, we did talk about this last year. We're going to paint the water tank inside and out, so maintains longevity and helps save it. Yes. Do we know what coating we use on that? I was curious. Contractor provides the coating or do we have a spec on that coating?
We, we provide that. We normally do the offshore maintenance products, but we accept others.
Other comparables.
Yeah.
Okay.
What color?
Good question. Sky blue.
Color do you want?
I don't, just wondered if they had a preference, if they were going to have a color pick. Or if we're going to have a contest.
I know, I, I was thinking the same thing. We have a contest, but how to paint.
Snowplows.
Well, this one is a ground level tank. It's kind of hidden away.
Well, that's even better.
Camouflage.
If it's up high, we don't want to have a contest because that'll, it'll go way over the budget.
But ground level, we could have a contest.
We could.
Yeah.
How many, how many gallons is this thing, just out of curiosity? A million? So it's, I'm assuming this thing's a giant? Just trying to figure out what $750,000 is getting us.
$750,000 worth of paint is a lot of paint.
Yeah.
How long is it going to be, is the tank going to be out of service?
It will be several months to be done. I would guess ideally they get it done in three months, but, well, paint is very temperature, atmosphere, condition sensitive, so you've got to have the right temperature, you have the right humidity. That's why I wanted, I wanted to get this one bid out soon because we get a window in the spring and it's a good time to paint and then we get into the middle of the summer when it's just too hot in it and then we have another window in fall. Ideally, we can get this one going in the spring.
If you only have, like say, you're telling a window in the spring and a window in the fall, would the tank be down out of commission that whole time from that spring to the end of the fall?
No.
Or would you be able to bring it back up?
Ideally, we would get it done within one of those two.
Okay, so we're not going to start in the spring, lead it down in the summer when it's too hot and finish it up in the fall?
Correct.
So we're going to do it all in one fell swoop?
And summer is the time of the highest water demand, so we want all of our facilities to be online.
But, but you're thinking because the project takes about three months, it'd be down about three months-ish?
Yeah.
Ish? So we would, gosh, so we're hoping that we get a nice little window in probably March would be ideal.
We're probably looking roughly April, May, June.
Okay. Yeah, it's ideal.
Mr. Malta?
Any other questions? I would like to motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Hussey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted. Last item, resolution 2025-05, again, Mr. Malta, it is budgeted. Mr. Scavelli, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-05, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise according to law and enter a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of an extension of the sanitary sewer, the Oldman Road sanitary sewer extension and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
So I think, thank you, sir. I think the only thing that wasn't said was this project will be funded with some TIF money and we've done that historically, so it's pretty cut and dry. We have talked about this. It's budgeted.
Is this, so if the TIF is covering it, is it the TIF for that nor, from the north end housing project?
Well, sorry, so the TIF, the TIF area that we passed in '23 includes, and I wish I had the map, but it's, it's the area behind Lowe's, you know, just south of that Reserve at Deer Creek, so that big open parcel there, all the way down through the school, the area where Spring Run is with, all the way over to Burbank Road. So there's an area in there that Weaver owns, you know, and this sewer would be, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So this. After the meeting, like, that was the TIF area.
Got it.
That's the entire TIF area, so this sewer would make sewer available to that area that's currently owned by Weaver, west of Burbank-Freiburg, north of Cannon. Formerly Beulah, you know, just south of Beulah, that whole area there, so.
I was just curious to where, where that was, where that sewer was, or the sanitary was supporting.
Any other question?
What would be the timeframe for this? Are we talking about, people are going to say, how much, how, how much and how long are you going to tear my roads up? How much interruption will there be?
Well, there's not a full lot along Oldman Road. Most of it is going up along the east property line of the high school. So much of it will be outside of the right of way in East and Weaver County School. So there shouldn't be a whole lot of disruption as far as traffic on Oldman Road.
But it'll be east of Oldman on Burbank?
It, it will be, so it will be going along the east side of the high school property, like where the class course, just west of the woods over there. It'll be going north along.
So you'll be going through, you won't even be on the road for some of it?
We'll be on the road just a little bit, maybe a couple hundred feet, just to get over to that one.
Right.
From the existence sewer, but then much of it will just be running up along that tree road.
So you may not even be on the roads for incredibly long time.
It won't be that long.
Okay.
It won't be like those, those hometowns.
Thank you. That was going to be the next question. Now, how long are you going to tear my roads up and I can't get from here to there? So I'd like to have an answer to be able to give people for that.
John, if, if that's the case, John would have to go into witness protection.
Understandable. No, I think that, I think that makes sense that we're going to be on the roads very, very little and disrupting where we generally, an area we've just disrupted. I'm just kind of keeping an eye out for those folks.
Okay. Mr. Malta?
I would, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Scavelli, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Hussey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted. That concludes our regular portion of the meeting, or our new business portion of the meeting. We'll move on to miscellaneous. We've only had one person sign up to speak this evening, so Mr. Barnett?
Good evening. I felt embarrassed today. I emailed ODOT and a gentleman from the governor's office also reported my email to ODOT. So I thought I'd call him December 17th and see what was going on and he said, I didn't receive your emails. Well, right there, this conversation isn't going the way I want it. So anyhow, we got talking and he said, I don't know why you're getting hold of ODOT anyhow. Worcester City funded their own roundabouts on Oak Hill. I didn't know this. I'm embarrassed. And he that does 99% of the public in Worcester know this. Everybody I've asked, where do you think this money is coming from for these roundabouts? Oh, it's government funded. Governor Dewine's doing it all. No, he's not. So you're wanting, my, like probably everybody else up here, my property tax went up $1,000 this year. $1,000. That's a lot of money for a fixed income. I don't look at as money, I look at as my life enjoyments of fishing and golf. That would be less trips I ever did. The safety issue is a big safety issue. If you don't think it's a safety issue, pedestrians yield, get, yield to pedestrians, let's go down to the College of Worcester's administration office and ask them how that works on Bell Avenue. Yet don't. See how many students got hit by cars. There's too many distracted drivers. Wayne County this year has the highest pedestrian accidents because of distracted drivers. Mr. Rice told me, oh, that's a different story. No, it isn't. These people ain't going to put down their phones to go throughout through that roundabout. And now you're wanting me to find, so 1.5 million for the one at Oak Hill, 4.6 million one for Oak Hill and Middletown, this one I know is going to be $6 million of my property money in the city, every resident in Worcester, whether you rent or own, you're going to pay. I just, I just can't figure out this, folks. I just can't figure it out.
Sir, you're turning this out.
I don't care. I had a lady.
Sir, at this point, your time's up. I'm sorry.
Come to my, to my mailbox. I'll be back next meeting and I'll continue with this story. I want you to remember the lady that walked up to my door with a mailbox.
Thank you.
All right. This will start off with Mr. Hussey. Do you have anything to add this evening in miscellaneous?
No, welcome back, everybody, to the new year and I guess we're both off of our rookie hazing period now, but.
We were supposed to haze.
Just excited to be back and get back in business once again.
All right, thank you. Mr. Abernathy?
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Knappich?
I just have a couple of things, of course. First of all, I want to congratulate Josh Timso. Josh, I've known him for a long time. He is an outstanding person, first and foremost. He is the resource officer at the middle school. God bless him. That's not an easy job and those kids love him and he's just an amazing person, amazing family. And I'm not surprised that he went above and beyond and did something that wasn't required as a police officer to make people's Christmas be happy. And, and that just exemplifies what a good person he is. In all the acclaim awards that I looked at in our documents and our paperwork, we've got some people who have done above and beyond and I'm going to keep that near to me for when people call and complain, we at least have some good things to talk about as well, some good things that our people are doing. The second thing that I wanted to address is I'm on the committee for the new zoning project and I understand that housing is a huge issue in this city and, and that's what many of us ran on when we ran for office the last time getting housing in. And it's an interesting process, it's an interesting proposal. I would ask everyone to keep an open mind and hope that we can get to a resolution that can make everyone satisfied. Not everyone wants high density housing. High density housing is absolutely great to preserve farmland. Is it the best for the city of Worcester? And man, much of that will depend upon where it is as well. So I think we should all keep an open mind and look at things objectively and how it impacts not only the entire city, but also sections of the city. impacts not only the entire city, but also sections of the city. And that's, that's what I'm trying to do as well. And I want to welcome everybody back and hope they had a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season, and I hope the new year goes tremendously well. So far, so good. We've been in the right place in the right time for get some money here, and that's always, always good news. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffey?
I, I don't have anything to add tonight.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Warden?
I just want to thank the crew that has been keeping our streets nice and safe. We've gotten a little bit of snow this year, which is kind of a change for the last couple years, and the updates from Joe Vila letting us know how many trucks have been out on the roads each morning, and I know these are longer hours than our crews have probably had for a couple of years, and they're doing a great job, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Malta?
I will keep it short and sweet. I don't have anything further than a Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
I want to say congratulations to Assistant Chief Rotolo. It's an outstanding award. I've, I've worked with Scott over the years in different committees and things he does above and beyond. He, you know, personal time, he's not required to do, and be the chair president of the board of the Boys and Girls Club, but he does. He's not required to put in the kind of time in these local things that he does, but, but he does it anyway. I think his, his speech was, if not you, then who? And so he, he really practices what he preaches. I believe he's now on the board at the Mental Health Recovery Board, and he's been jumping in there. So I, I just want to say congratulations and a word well deserved to, to Mr. Rotolo, so thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.
I was going to call you back.
Yeah, I was, I was going.
You're fine.
I was going to remind you.
You're fine. That's no problem.
All right. So we got everything, yeah, we, so we got everything done, so at this point, I don't know what they're going to do. Right. Exactly. That's what I say, I mean, at this point. I apologize. I did not say anything to him.
I paid a lot in Ochoa for two houses, me and Charlie Gray.